Good for you. All right, well, I didn't bring my phone, I left my phone on my desk at work, so I'm sure we're at that magic 6:30 number. And we know that Audrey's not coming in, Barb's not back, right? Is that our thing? So, I guess we're all here, let's call ourselves to order tonight. And that, we're gonna go right to public comment.
We don't do the pledge?
Uh, not for committee, we'll be okay.
If you don't mind.
Are you gonna public comment?
Yes, just real quick.
Okay.
I just wanna, I made a comment back at the last school board meeting, and I just wanna clarify what I meant to say. What I said was, I'm in total support of charging the out-of-district students. What I, my true feeling is, I'm in support of charging out-of-district students if it profits the school. I just wanted to change my statement to that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that takes us right into the meeting, so, Mr. McGee, I'll send to you.
All right. In your packet you'll have some minutes from the previous meetings, that, I'm just gonna ask you, take a look at that. You know, it should give you the basic outline of how to move and flow it. If you feel as though they need to be amended, please, you know, just let us know, and then we'll bring it to the next meeting, and discuss the changes that we're looking at on the list. Next thing, one of the things that we're saying we would do at this meeting is we would bring the historical Excel planning budget, a RIF plan, and some budgeted funds. And so, we have the budgeted fund report for the 13, 14 years that we brought, so we can take a look at that. We also have a RIF plan that has been put together, and we can talk about that. And finally, we have the Excel spreadsheet budget, that is different from what you originally saw. As you recall, at the last meeting, we were looking at about a $77,000 increase in budget in our healthcare under line item 201, 160, 1,000, 260. And that's under the instructional, where most of our teachers' salaries sit up above in line 1,000, 112. And I said we were basing that last Excel spreadsheet number off of our projected actuals, but I was concerned as to how that number was coming into play and how it was fitting together. So I spent some time going back into the budget this last month, and looking at where we had planned for expenditures to occur, and where monies are actually being pulled out of. And I noticed that we have on health insurance options when a teacher is taking their benefit in cash in lieu of the insurance. It comes out of this new line item, where planning-wise, it was being placed in other items in the budget. So actually, what you will find, is that we were in that Excel spreadsheet, projecting about $52,000 more in expense than we actually were going to expend. So we made the adjustments, and came back, and so I wanted just to make sure that this butterfly, so on that, you know, when you see the budgeted health insurance review, that $52,000, 930 was essentially what I told you, I wanted to go back and see what was going on inside the budget, and why it was doing what it was doing. And so we made some discoveries there, and found that there was a savings of that amount that we could work into the budget. With that, you will also see, the other big thing on the reduction and force plan is that we were staring at, you know, a $230,000 deficit, $233,000 deficit. And, so I had mentioned that, you know, in order to address that, we were gonna probably have to take a look at teaching positions. And so, one of the things that the administrative team at the school has been looking at, is where could potential staffing cuts occur that would have the least amount of impact to the student population? Some of the areas we took a look at was special ed. We took a look at our special ed population, took a look at the staffing in special ed, and the students and the caseloads. And one of the things that we know in the special ed program is that it's a very dynamic and fluid program. You know, we determined that it would be very difficult to make a staff cut in that area, because of the ripple effect of impact that the needs of some of these students being pushed into a regular classroom may do to the regular classroom population. So, it was one area we took a significant look at. We also took a look at staffing at the elementary level and at the middle school level. We took a look at caseloads in both areas. And one of the areas we studied very hard was the elementary, down in our lower kindergarten T1 level, as to whether or not we would maintain that program versus up in the middle school level, we were looking at staffing, and could we make some changes in class offerings up there by possibly at the eighth grade level, moving from a reading and an English class, and combining it into a communication arts class, and thus, you know, shaping some of the scheduling around to pull a staff member out of there. Now, at the middle school level, you know, you don't have huge, large class sizes, and that has been by design. But then the discussion went to, do we take the staff member out of middle school, and what kind of ripple effect will that have moving forward into high school, as the kids move up into high school? Or do we pull a staff member out of, down in the lower elementary? What kind of effect would that have for those kids moving forward? And, as a team, we pretty much came to a conclusion that, you know, if you provide the services to the younger kids as they're starting out, you know, if they fall behind early, they usually stay behind. And as they stay behind, the learning gap tends to widen, and it's hard to bring that gap back. And usually it widens to an extent that they end up in services, whether it's Title I services, or whether it's special ed services. So, I think the conclusion by the team was, let's try to provide the support necessary at the lower levels for the younger kids, to avoid that kind of trending that could occur with learning. So we decided that, you know, in middle school, that there were positions there that could be had. One of the other positions that had been created, we've been bouncing this back and forth for a few years, has been at that library position, you know. We have for years been able to sustain with two librarians, but the state comes in and tells us for accreditation reasons, we need a third librarian. And then, we put a third librarian on for a year or two, and then, you know, so we've been kinda doing this dance, and in all honesty, you know, if we were to remove that position that we put in last year, we could sustain with the state for a couple more years on our plan, but in all honesty, it would have a lot less impact than pulling out other types of programs, whether it is another instructional program at the elementary T1, or whether it's another instructional teacher at the middle school or high school. And then finally, there was one high school position that we looked at, that we'd also targeted as a potential cost savings if the program was eliminated. So, that's how we came to our conclusions on this RIF. And as you can see, the monies involved here pan out to the $232,006,10, which is pretty much in line with where we were needing to get in terms of closing that gap or that hole that we had seen in the budget from the previous budget meeting. Now, once you take a look down on the Excel spreadsheet, you can kinda see how the monies flow, or are flowing through. And when you can get down to that health insurance at 1,000, 260, and you'll see that it went from a $77,000 increase to a $24,000 increase. And then, everything else, and you'll see in the salaries, you'll see that there's a change there, but that is, that change occurred as opposed to the last Excel spreadsheet, because we pulled these salaries out. So some of these salaries came out of these areas. And then when we talk about, like, the principals position, as you get down into, you know, principal services, office of principal services, you'll see where those things have occurred, and some of the insurance things that affect those positions. In trying to sustain the supply lining at current levels, you will see that we've worked very hard to try to keep it that way, and for the most part, we've been able to do so. Under line item 1,000, 350 contracted services, that $25,000 that was pulled out of there, as I stated in the last meeting, was budgeted for an SRO. And, you know, the point is, if you were to budget that in, and have to pull out to make room for that program in the school, it's gonna have to come at the expense of either contracting down the current levels of supply dollars, or supply dollars and, you know, some other position. So, just so that you're aware, the SRO program is a program that could be beneficial to the school district, and with the administrative cuts that we have taken on, could be very helpful to the two principals that we have reduced down from 2.5 to 2. Another thing that we've talked about that has been out there in a discussion is adding more time for another computer tech in this building, so that we could have extra assistance in helping to manage and work the network. We have a fairly sophisticated network, and it's not, you know, in the realm of reality that that could be very beneficial to the school district to have one of those positions. But once again, to create that position, you're gonna have to make choices in terms of what you do within this budget structure. And then finally, the last thing that we've talked about was, you know, having some kind of a discussion on tuition, and what tuition would look like if we did. You know, and it's simple, we have 81 students as of today that are out-of-district students. If you were to take those 81 students and charge $1,000 per student, you could say, okay, let's budget $81,000 into the budget, because all of those students would pay tuition. If you were to just cut that in half and say, okay, let's charge $500 tuition, you could see about $40,000 in increased revenue. And as you speak in those terms, you would say, okay, well, that affords us an opportunity to put the SRO in the school. That affords us the opportunity to put the computer tech in, or that affords us the opportunity to hire back a teacher that we are ripping. But that is also something that I don't believe you could count on those monies, and utilize those monies in a planning stage right now, because you would have to have some kind of ability to look at, what is tuition gonna do, how stable is it going to be as a resource? You're gonna need probably two or three years of data showing with open enrollment, or with the enrollment the way that it is, and the number of people who are willing to pay tuition. Because with the 81 students, if you were to charge, say, $10,000 tuition, I'd probably say, you're gonna lose 70, 75 of those students. If you were to say, okay, let's charge a reasonable amount in 500 or 1,000, then I'd say, you're still gonna see some loss. I don't know what that level would be, so I don't know how you could count on those budgeted dollars, and how that would factor in. But it is something that is worth giving a little bit of consideration to.
So I did a little bit of my own research on that, and talked to some of the parents of kids that I know are out of district, just the ones that I happen to know personally. And almost all of them told me that they would pull their kids if they had to. I know this is like, you know, four or five parents, but, so it's something to think about, because then we, as we talked about last time, we would lose money from...
We'd lose the A and B for them.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So... Did they say where they would send them?
Well, most of them are in Stevensville School District, and they go to Stevensville.
So that's five of the 80?
Yeah, like I said, well, some of those parents have multiple kids that go to here, at least three each. But yeah, all four or five that I talked to said that they would opt for the sending their kids to Stevensville, so. Just, and like I said, that was just a quick little talk to them, kinda see how they were feeling, and the people that I know personally, so.
So we'd lose our A and B, but is it not a deficit that we are in currently having them?
Well, that's something we would have to look into, how much A and B we would lose over how much we would be getting.
Our last, the latest numbers you gave us were, what, 8,000?
About 8,400 is what it costs.
And we get 62, so...
And that, is that per kid?
Well, you get A and B per kid, and yes, the A and B is below what it costs to educate a kid, but if you were to remove the 80 students out of the district, that cost per education go up.
Right.
Because what's happening with that right now is that that A and B dollar is deflating that average down. So that average cost per student will escalate as a result of losing that A and B.
Well, and like we're talking, those 80 kids are spread out between 13 grades, so it's not like you're gonna lose them all and be able to cut a teacher.
And seeing that, and the problem with this, you know, the school district has become somewhat dependent on out-of-district students and the revenue that they bring in in terms of A and B.
Okay.
In our budgeting, I mean, you know, when you talk about that amount, you're talking about over $400,000 in A and B. And as a result, when you're dependent upon that, as those students were to leave, and you were to lose that A and B revenue, you'd have to ask yourself, okay, what are we gonna do next? Because we have budgeted a lot of things in here. Now, would it be a cost savings if those students left? Only if you had to hire more teachers on, and you were having more costs because you brought those students in. But as our policy has managed out, now, we don't bring students in, once the grade level gets to a point of being overloaded, where, you know, new students coming in that live in district come in, and we have to hire more teachers on, we don't allow out-of-district students in at that point, we stop that, that emerging from occurring, because we realize that that additional resource of money that you have to dedicate to a new teacher is a burden to your taxpayer, your local taxpayer. So what we're trying to do is balance between, okay, we got a classroom that can seat 25 kids, we have 18 kids in a classroom, if we stick three or four out-of-district students in that classroom, is that, three or four students that we're sticking in there, costing us money to do so? And, you know, the answer to that question is, in that scenario, no, it's not. But, if you were to hire another teacher on, then those three or four students you added in had an extraneous cost, and elevated your overall budget needs.
And do we trust that? Do you guys trust that, that...
We're...
Fifth graders?
How many are any...
Have four out-of-district kids, and then that four puts them over?
Yeah, we keep track of them.
Could we see those?
We had, I think, was it last year or year before, we had so many new kindergarteners that were gonna be here, and that were gonna, and then all these out-of-district kindergartners, that we had to kinda put them on a waiting list, right? To see who was really gonna show up that was in district before we filled the seats with out-of-district kids.
Yes.
So some of those parents ended up knowing at the last minute whether they were gonna get to send their kid here, so...
So yeah, to answer your question, Colby, yeah, I, we do have those numbers, so...
So we could, you could give me out-of-district kids per class from K through 12?
Yes, I can.
Okay. That'd be helpful, just to...
And where we're standing right now, in that arena, is we're right around five or six per grade level. You know, we're sitting right around five or six per grade level. There is one grade level, which is the sophomore grade level, that has 13. But what gets tricky at the high school level is, those kids get dispersed amongst not just three teachers, they're all over the high school arena. They're taking different electives, they're taking different core classes. So, in that essence, do we have high school classes that are overcrowded? And we don't see that we have high school classes that are overcrowded that is requiring us to hire additional teaching staff.
If we were a closed district, and we did not have these 87 kids, take that off our enrollment, how much, what, how much, what, how much do 87 kids account for teaching positions?
Right now, zero.
So if we, nothing, so we're not, we're, for additional 87, it requires no additional, so if they all left today, we wouldn't have to cut staff?
We'd still have the same staff, I mean. And that's just based off of the fact that when we, when we look at putting out-of-district kids into the school, we're looking at staffing, and we're saying, okay, if we have 25 desks in a room, and only 18 kids in the class, and we put two or three kids in that class, we're believing we're getting revenue there. Because of the fixed costs of that teacher's salary, that teacher's health insurance, the fixed costs of the utilities in that room, and all those things are there. And another thing that, you know, when you talk about the supply side, when we purchase textbooks, we tend to purchase textbooks for not just that one grade level for that one year, but what we see trending. So when you take a look down, and you can see, okay, one year you have 73 kids in a room, in 2000, well, let's go to 2013, you have 71 kids in a room one year, and you have 56 the next year. And we don't have textbooks just for those 56. We plan textbooks out for the 71, so there are extra textbooks that year that sit on the shelf, because we know we're gonna need them the next year. And so we're not going out and buying a bunch of textbooks and stuff for all these out-of-district. There are textbooks that are sitting on the shelf, because we're planning that way, because we don't want a student showing up here and not having a textbook, and then they spin their wheels for three weeks while we order it and get it delivered. Because there's about two to three week turnaround when we order that material.
And we're using that textbook for two or three or five years, or whatever the replacement plan is, so you have to look at that behind classroom...
Well, I know some of them, let's have fifth graders, and their class is small, but I know the class behind them and above them is really big, so...
So, so there'll be textbooks for that class that was ahead of them, and the classes behind them, but there are probably a lot of textbooks sitting on the shelf right now, because there are so many.
So we can just go recruit some more fifth graders?
Actually, I guess, I have a couple of the textbooks that they let me use, so I can have, because they keep them in school sometimes?
All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, that's my fault, my fault.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
My bad.
Thank you.
Yep.
So...
So anyway...
So anyway, it's all parts of the puzzle, is that, you know, that helps us try to see what the overall benefit of having the kids here, because if we, if we said tomorrow that they, nobody, none of them could come next year, again, we're losing all that A and B money.
That's a question that I...
But we still have the lights on, and heating, and we still have that many kids, because again, it's five or six kids per class, if you have three teachers per elementary grade, that's two, two kids per elementary grade, that's not enough to, you know, it just doesn't boil down to the B's, and all, they're all in first grade, so let's just get rid of them, doesn't come out that way.
Again, that's opinion, what we need is true numbers, and we're finally getting them. I'm seeing 62 to 8, I'm, it's simple math. I mean, like, you can go back and say how it all is, but it's, this, what we're looking at is math. And you guys can carry on and give opinions, but that's not what we're here for, it's just, what is it costing us, and why, where are we gonna cut, and all that, that's what I, I agree, I know, Pat, I know you're all in for keeping them, and I'm not saying I'm against them, I'm just saying that, right as of right now, it, they, the out-of-district students are causing a budget deficit. Let's not say they're costing us money, they're putting, they're costing, they're putting us in a budget deficit, all right? When you look at it in those terms, you can bypass all the stuff we're talking about, and it simplifies it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I'm not sure that I see how that math works out, if you, if you take, if you take 80 payments of A and B out of, out of the incoming revenue, then, then, you know, you're, you're exponentiating what your shortfall's gonna be.
But it's all, you're getting, they're giving you money, and what is it costing you to have it? Those numbers are there in front of there. And you can argue those from two in front, but if you take our total budget and divide it by total enrollment, we're at 11,000 bucks. You know, so I mean, you can do it whatever you want, and we can sit and argue, and I don't wanna argue that. What I wanna argue is about getting our, you know, what we're here for, so. That, all that aside, and we can go off on this out-of-district thing again, and, you know, and it's an, it's a, it's an idea, but...
Well, I think part of the discussion here was that, that we were trying to determine whether recommending a tuition as part of the budget...
And you're saying, well, they're gonna leave, well, okay.
I guess what I heard is you said, you need to move on past this point at this time.
Is what?
Move on past this point.
Right, I mean, that's not where, exactly, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, so with that being said, I don't, I have no problem with that, I mean, that's, you know, we could argue till the cows come home on, on these ideas, and it's just, you know, where we're gonna be at. But as we, we get back to the realities of the numbers that we're faced with, you know, you can see the proposals, at the bottom of your budget sheet, you can see the proposed budget that OPI gives us. You know, and they turn around, and they're proposing for next year to give us $5,312,000. If you compare that to the Excel spreadsheet that you had on the 25th, you will notice that that's a little larger than what you originally given. And the reason for that was, like we've said, we're dependent upon OPI giving budget numbers out to us. And they didn't finally get us some budget numbers until, was it March 3rd or March 4th?
Yeah, I think it was March 4th.
So, those numbers are in, official numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, finally, the official numbers that we received on March 4th told us that we would have $5,312,000.
You can go on the OPI website...
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, I just haven't followed that, but they are there, okay, thank you.
Then that can't change at this point, right? Or do you...
You know, I've seen in years past where, as we go through the summer months and stuff, that that number changes a little. I don't know why that happened, I just think that, you know, financial division, they're probably doing all kinds of calculations, and they determine some kind of revenue was missed, and then they add it in, and it changed everybody across the states.
It's based off all kinds of things, revenue, oil, I mean, there's a lot to it.
Yeah, I've...
So, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, you, they, really, it's not gonna change by tens of thousands. I've never seen that, it's gonna stick pretty close.
But it generally goes up, is that correct?
I've had a year where it's gone down.
One year, and then how many others have gone up?
17 years I've done it, I've had one year where it has gone down.
But the other 16, it generally raises, doesn't it? Because it all, every year, consistently goes up.
But it's not gonna be like, I mean, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be $40,000?
No.
Where we can say...
No, but it, it never drops, let's put it that way.
Okay.
So, you can see what the proposed budget is, and, so as we look at the itemized line items that we, we have expenditures coming out of, you can then see that we tried to stick historically to what our plan has been. And I guess that lends to the question, what would you like to see this budget do for the school district for next year? And have you had any thoughts or ideas that you'd like to talk about? Because, you know, this would be a great opportunity for us to have some discussion about that.
Well, there's been some thought going around that if we reduce the principals Well, um, there's been some thought going around that if we reduce the principals to two, are we reducing the administrative or the secretaries for them?
We have not proposed that.
We have not, we're not proposing that in this one.
And here's, here was some of the thought around this, you know. We recognize that at the administrative level with the cuts that we are making, that it, it's going to make those two positions a lot more difficult than what they are right now. And so it talks about what do you do to support those positions? Now, one of the ways to support those two positions could be to get a, a school resource officer in here. And we, we looked at it and we said, you know, do you eliminate another position, be it a classified secretarial position, create money to do that? Because a school resource officer can be very beneficial in.
Yeah, he can, he can come.
Yeah, he can. Could be very beneficial in assisting in the discipline and the management of discipline at the school and attacking the issues that come down the pipe. But in all honesty, if you have that added secretarial assistance, one of the things that we have the secretary pool divided up doing right now is, there's some cash balancing for fundraising that comes in that one secretary does. There's also one secretary that is managing the databases and doing the state uploads. Because what we have here is the state is constantly asking us for information. And so then we have to upload that information and we have to then download the fixes to their program when our program doesn't talk with theirs. Because they have a database that we don't. We have schoolmaster as a database. And they don't always talk together, so we have a secretary that works on that. And administrative, we, we took a look at it and we thought if we strip the secretary out of that situation, it's not only compounding the principal, it's compounding the secretary for that principal. And the secretary for that principal could be inundated with a lot more problems. And in all honesty, they're the ones who run when parents come. When a parent comes to the window, it's the secretary who's delivering the service and really helping that parent get to where they need to go, uh, get their issues to that teacher or that administrator. And so we looked at it as value wise, that I think it'd be, in this instance, valuable to maintain one of the secretarial positions. Given that we've cut back administrative.
I'm totally good with that, I think that's a wide plan here. Especially as we ease back into or jump the full feet back into having each principal has more kiddos. So, um, I think that they need all that support help that they can have. And I'm for secretary, honestly. I, again, I'd love to have an SRO in the building, but I recommend in this particular instance to the board that we keep the secretary instead.
But one of the other things just to keep upon the surface too is, if you were to eliminate one of the secretarial positions, you would have approximate cost savings of about twenty-eight, twenty-two thousand dollars. You're about fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars away from a teacher that you could bring back into the pool. So, you know, that, you know, when you look at this rip plan and say, well, one to two middle school positions, let's just get it back in by eliminating that. But I would also venture to say, we've thought about that and that added secretarial position has a lot of value, has a lot of value to the school district and its functioning and its operation. And that just proves the point that some of your classified employees that do not do the most glamorous jobs do very critical jobs for a school district. And I say that every day with my custodians. If you don't have your custodians disinfecting the room, you're gonna have some disease run through this place quickly. So they have very important jobs and the same is true with other classified employees like secretaries.
So as of right now, you're R A F, you're showing us, you guys are gonna read these for you. So proposed staff cuts, half a principal for forty-one thousand eight, two middle school positions for ninety-six thousand hundred, close to two hundred, ninety-six thousand two hundred, high school position forty-one thousand, then we can additional fifty-two thousand on our health insurance.
Yeah, and the health insurance, as you recall at the last meeting, I wasn't comfortable with that one line item. So we went back and we looked at that and found where it wasn't adding up and made those corrections.
So it was heavy, you pulled fifty-two out of it?
Yes, it was heavy. And the reason it was heavy, as I said at the last meeting, we're going off of the actual expenditures of what was coming out of that line item. And so we budgeted in that Excel spreadsheet on the twenty-fifth those actuals because I wanted to make sure we had money to pay those bills. But I wasn't certain in some of the other line items in the budget, because I felt like maybe we got money budgeted elsewhere that we need to move around because we're not using it to upload. Now, I kept, for example, we have one principal's health insurance coming out of up here. That should stay under principal services. I kept it under principal services now and this summer, when you go back in, we're gonna work that out so that it's coming out of the direct area it should. But, you know, for this year, it was, you know, doing some of the functions that we have going on with our big changeover of this Obamacare and the cash option out type stuff that we have going on. We're, you know, we're managing, we have our, it was just in my planning budget, I, I was heavy in putting in fifty-two thousand because I was worried we didn't have enough money to cover our bills and I wanted to make sure we did that. And so that's what happened, okay?
All right. Can you touch base again on, what, what was your comment on additional computer tech position?
Well, the computer tech, when, when we take a look at the number of computers we have in our system and where we were at, oh, eight or nine years ago when I first started here, and the number of computers we've added on to our system, the number of servers, um, the types of programs that we are running in our system, um, the type of instructional equipment we've added in. We have, we have continued to add more and more and more and keep a lot more responsibilities on top of this one person. So we, we ended up putting a Promethium board in every classroom with a projector. And so the problem when you do those types of things, they're great for the teachers. Teachers use them and they're wonderful tools. But when you have a problem, if you have a problem in one, you're probably gonna have a problem in a dozen and now we have seventy of them in the building, you're gonna have problems, I mean, it's a workflow issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then the same is true with, we've added a lot of iPads into the system. And then the same is true is we've added what we call these computer on wheels, uh, labs, where we have a mobile lab with thirty computers that can move around. So you have all those and you have, we have now upwards of three hundred plus computers in our system. Plus the servers, plus the routers, um, all the wireless stuff we're doing. And so what we have is, is what's amounting to almost an impossible position for a person to really manage and take care of.
What do, what do we pay it, what, what's our computer tech running right now, about forty, forty-five?
Forty-three, I believe it is.
And so if you brought in another, you're considering so bumping that up to two eighty, ninety, somewhere near, is that your thought? If you added another one, same wage, I mean, have you ever considered outsourcing? Like a lot, I mean, like First Call, obviously.
Yeah, well, we do have, we do.
I see that, I see they do both and I use that with my business and. If you compare that to eighty thousand dollars a year of two employees.
Well, it's the size of our network in terms of what we're trying to manage machine wise. We do use First Call, um, every year. We have them come out and assist us with certain issues on our network.
Like what, like something our computer tech can't handle?
Well, I don't wanna say can't handle because Gary's very good. I mean, he, he's very capable of handling a lot of things. But we call them out when we have a volume of issues that we're trying to track and manage. Um, if we have a severe attack or a virus gets through our firewalls and starts hitting a lot of our machines, we may need every machine in the building touched and it may take thirty minutes a machine to clean it. Um, then we'll bring them out to assist in that, those types of help.
You don't really have to bring them out, they can do, I mean, all, all minds is you, you, you hit a button and they fix it, just like that. That's what, all, my point is, there's, you know, technologies come along ways where you don't have onsite people hired. You can actually do it for a third of the cost, it's expensive, but ninety thousand dollars a year is a lot of money. And if you looked at what First Call could do you, for you for a year, have you got quotes from them?
I haven't got a quote on that because I haven't proposed to hire another additional person on. But before I would propose to hire an additional person on, um, I think it would be who the district to look at that.
I think that's an excellent idea.
To take a look at it and see how it would pan out in addition to what we're doing right now.
Saying we're looking at cutting proposed staff and all that, I'm just saying we have a computer tech, I mean, throw them in the mix. There's other ways to save money, you know. I'm not going to Gary Jarvey, I'm just saying that I know, you know, to employ a, a person full time onsite and they're, you know, First Call's a click of the button. You have a problem, you click it, they fix it.
Well, one of the things that, you know, one of the things about First Call, I mean, it's not that I'm against First Call, but.
And they're just examples, there's plenty of them out there.
We've got realities for any of those companies that we face. We have students that are touching their machines. We don't have professional adults that are, are trained to, to deal with it like a lot of businesses do. So when you get kids in there, they tend to pick at the keys and maybe pick a key off the key door or take a paper clip and stick it in and grind it on the fan that's going in there. You get a lot of this type of abusive machines that occur and it's not that the kids are being malicious and destructive on purpose, it's their curiosity running amok. And so what, a lot of times what Gary is having to also deal with are the physical laborious things of, okay, I gotta replace a fan in the computer or I have a bulb on a projector that burned out, I've gotta go get that bulb replaced. They, they are physical tasks that can't be managed remotely and, you know. But I do agree that if we were looking at a solution, remote management might be a, a cost saving thing, but I don't think it would be absolutely ideal for.
So much cost savings, it's amazing the time they save you in efficiency. That's all I'm saying, so. Okay, I just, we don't, we don't need to drag that one down, but that's just another.
Okay.
Just wanna throw that out.
And so that was one thing that we talked about, the possibility for additional systems with computers.
So you'll look into that then? So please, please look into what, how about getting a quote from an outsourced company on what they would do to, um, maintain your entire network for you for a year?
See if they can do it for us and.
They give you a quote and you have unlimited resources through them.
Could I comment on that?
Yes.
Just the other day, I have the cow in my room and we're getting ready to do the smarter, smarter balance test. And all the computers are out, the kids are getting on them and we didn't have the proper Chrome down, we downloaded. So Jarvey had to come in and, I mean, between everything that he does, he took all the computers out, he downloaded everything he needed. Right when he was finishing up, I shut like ten computers down, put them back in because he's getting called over the speaker to come down to the elevator. I mean, I see him all the time, he is constantly running, we have computers off our, all over the place. And, I mean, he is overloaded and he does a great job.
Well, I'm not saying he's not doing a great job, but what I'm saying, what if you could get that great job done at half the cost? Well, I mean, that's all I'm saying, I'm not going anywhere, hell, we're, we're throwing out, cutting middle school positions, high school positions, I'm just looking at positions here. And that's one thing I have experience with and I've, I've invested in them, they're doing a phenomenal job for what we do. And it's, it's, it's low maintenance and it's, it's incredible. And so that's all, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. But I understand Gary, I'm sure he works hard.
Yeah, he's just like.
I understand that, but.
Taking with his head cut off. You know, it's crazy how, how much he can get done and the hours that he spends there on.
But you're, you're forty-five thousand a year, exactly.
And he should, yeah, right, you know, he should be.
But First Call did it for him.
And, you know, they couldn't, I mean, I'm, I'm getting ready for the smarter balance and I guess this is just, that day, we are practicing, we're doing the practice test and in a couple of days, we're gonna take the real online test and we have so much going on. I mean, he's in my room right now. There's no call and hope to get hooked up and me try to figure it out and get them on through the line. And then like I said, he's getting called, you know, I, I'm surprised he spends as much time in my room as he does. I have computers in my room and, you know, the cow comes through, he takes the time. And I, I just don't see how a outsourcer could be as efficient as an on-staff.
I had that same feeling until I did it, so.
Just to kind of make this point and then move on, we can go ahead and make that phone call and ask them, you know, give us price. But I'm gonna pretty much assure you, they, they won't price the school district at the same way they price a business. Because they understand, school districts are a different animal than say a professional business.
Wow, 'cause you have more modems?
Well, 'cause we have so many little kids touching those machines.
Talking about a, that's manual, I'm not worried about that, I'm talking about to get the.
But see, that's the, the thing is.
Do they go into their modems, just rip them apart?
They're gonna have to be there.
Sorry.
Whatever we do with First Call or whatever, that's gonna have to be part of the equation.
All right, honestly, we should probably move on, we're going off, we're way off topic. I, I, I'd suggest it was that, just looking at a quote and then we have pricing on it.
Look at it.
That way it's, it's, yeah, it's getting at it.
And a quote would be for supplemental help, it wouldn't be to replace, you, you know, an in the building person. It would be instead of hiring a second person.
Well, heck, we could look at replacing the person and I think, I think it will be eye opening to see that.
See what other schools do, I don't know about that. See what other businesses, just, you know, just, just open your mind and look at it, that's all I'm suggesting.
And I know that First Call does serve our districts that are rural because they can't get a computer tech. So they serve them and I know what those schools are paying, so I've got pretty good ideas about this.
Fair enough, that's enough on now.
Okay, um, any more questions on what we should be looking at?
What, uh, so who, as far as the proposed staff cuts, I mean, how do you, where, where high school position, middle school position, I mean, that, where? What would be the two middle school positions, did you have anything in mind?
Well, like the librarian.
So librarian and what's the other one?
And then there's a staff, a staff member at the middle school. And the staff member has not been identified, the program has been looked at in terms of the class loads and what class structure would look like. So what it'd be is taking a position and folding it into other positions. So it's not a person or a class per se, as it is a combination of different classes folding together for different teachers teach. But at the end of the day, the contraction would, would blend to one person's position being on. So that's what the middle school position would look like. At the high school level, we're talking about a program. And the program that we are looking at at the high school level is foreign language. You know, we have two foreign language teachers at our high school level and, you know, um, a lot of schools that are class B have one foreign language teacher. And so we can meet accreditation standards by having all the students move through the one foreign language program.
What foreign languages do we have, German and what?
German and Spanish.
Is it one of them or you're just looking at? You gotta narrow it down or you're just one of the two? Which one?
German.
How are we on P E teachers?
P E teachers have pretty good sized classrooms.
All of them?
How many P E teachers do we have? And are they split between grade, are they split between schools, like elementary?
They have some shared staff.
I'm sorry, how many do we have in high school?
We have Ms. Doc, Ms. Brager, Mr. Bearlocker. We have Ms. Stock, Ms. Brager, Mr. Bearlocker, Mr. Cobble.
Four? And they're all jam-packed schedule?
They have solid schedules, yes.
Okay.
That's four for the whole, for K through twelve?
Correct.
Yeah.
I definitely think there's some thought that needs to go into all this. Myself, I, now that I have this, I'd like to put a list of information together of questions, and then I'll send them to you, and I, I'm sorry, I've been bit, real busy lately too, so I've been a little lacking on that, but with the information you gave me tonight, I would like to, you know, obviously, just sit down and review it, and I have a number of questions I'll, I'll probably send to you. That'll help me go on with some of this, but that's kinda where I stand personally.
One more question on the, the PE teacher, um, they're not all, I mean, it's like PE and health, right?
Correct.
They do health, and then there's one teacher that's not full-time PE, right?
Correct.
At least, okay.
All the PE teachers teach health?
No, it's split up.
So how's that?
So, for example, we have a required health component in the middle school, and usually, one of the teachers will say, okay, I'm gonna take, um, a third of the kids and they're gonna get help, um, they're gonna be taught human sexuality and all types of things. And so, the other two-thirds of the kids go with the other two teachers.
So who are our health teachers at, currently?
Yeah, they tend to rotate from year to year, I can't recall off the top of my head who's teaching.
So it's split every year of...
They tend to, they try, sometimes they split it up, other times, there's somebody who stretch lives as a man, does a good job.
Of the four? We don't know who that is?
Um, I'm trying to think who that is.
Who's yours? Stock, I thought he's... So Stock's the only health teacher?
No.
Oh, no, just right off. Bearlocker teach health?
Yes, he could.
He could, or he does?
He could.
So he doesn't?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Has he ever taught health?
Yes, he has.
Just recently?
I, I don't know, I have to go back and look.
Okay, sorry, we're getting off topic again.
I can, I can verify that he has. Kinda do it yourself. Go back.
I had just a question about the current budget that we got the other day.
The actuals?
The, uh, yeah, the actuals. So, so for this year, we have budgeted, and make sure that I'm, 'cause it's kind of, I'm reading this right, this goes to here, right?
This category.
The four million, so we have...
Let's actually summarize this whole area, we have different, yeah, this is each year, the actual, turn your budget and process.
Okay, so we've only spent three million of the four point seven million this year, right?
This is through, um, probably February, because of March, we would have that by then.
Okay.
So, each month will be updated.
Okay, so in the major construction services, I just noticed that we had budgeted four point seven million, we, as of the last...
Major, with major, yeah.
Oh, sorry, um, seven of thirteen. Line item forty-six hundred and seven twenty-five.
Sorry, is this the one we got tonight?
No.
No, this is the one we got last week.
Last week, sorry, that's, that's one.
And it's the actual, so it's not the spreadsheet one? It's, I mean, it is the spreadsheet one, but it's not the one that has the box.
Oh, sorry, I got you, got you.
We have the actual. Um, seven of thirteen.
Can you throw that question out again, sorry?
Yeah, no problem. Um, so we had budgeted four point seven million, as of February, we had only spent three million. Um, and it's major construction services, so I was just kind of curious what's in that section, and this is one of the things I was gonna ask you.
But actually, it's the program, it's, it's everything up above.
Oh, cool.
There's different summaries.
Okay.
It's a lot confusing, yeah, it's summaries, and it's a total, but like a subtotal situation.
Okay.
So we can kind of go back, we can, you know...
Yeah, so when, so when major construction services, its total is right here, which is zero, there was zero budgeted there, there's zero.
Okay, so it's the...
And then when this gets everything up above, pulling down through.
Okay, so that makes a lot more sense, 'cause I was like, I was like, we have...
I was like, who, construction?
Yeah, I'm like, we have one point seven million dollars that we have.
Sending that and stuff.
This is a column here, it's really about the budget, so it's showing, this one is really helpful, 'cause it's about comparing, if we have new budget here, because of the old and the new, so this one's kind of erroneous, but, yes, this is really the current budget.
So that whole section, like electricity, garbage?
Up and down.
Okay, then I'm not as concerned.
Yeah, so that's, that's a totals line that doesn't have a space there, so it looks like it's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I was like, yeah, one point seven million in construction, what do we put? And then that's odd. Okay, yeah, I see, okay. So it's less concerning, 'cause obviously, we still have to pay gas, electricity, garbage, all that stuff for the rest of the year. Okay. Let me look, let me see if I have any to do. So I have a couple of notes in here, um, another touchy subject, sorry, um, the meals during travel. Are we making a recommendation for that in this? Or, you know, are we supposed to be talking about that, or is that something that the board is dealing with separately?
No, that's fair to be honest.
No, that's true, 'cause I was gonna say, if we can find a way to pay for it, then we can recommend it.
Yeah, 'cause I just, I was looking at kind of the sports and where things are budgeted there, um, and I know that that has been a hot subject, so I didn't know it was something that we should be talking about.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that could be given consideration is, we could track out what our tournament expenditures could be in terms of meals. If you were to say, okay, when the kids make it to the district, divisional, state level for competition, at that point, the district will be purchasing meals, you know, breakfast, lunch, and dinner for these kids when they travel. If you do that, then we can plan out, okay, this is what our expected expenditures could be for each team per season. And then, inside the general fund, you can line item out as we do for supply equipments and stuff in your general fund. This amount, we are going to budget for that activity, and that activity gets spent when, you know, there's the needs.
So that general, so that would go into the general fund and not be funded towards, I mean, you have each sport separated in your budget.
Well, what you'd probably do to, to make sure you're equitable in that distribution is say, okay, we know that football has a bracketing that they could end up traveling this number of times if they were to make the state playoffs. And you'd say, for each time they travel, uh, seven dollars per meal, per student, here's the average number of students, so here's the amount of money that they put into football. Then when you get to volleyball, you'd say volleyball have district, state, divisionals, and each time they travel, here's how much you could put in there, and you could budget that all in. You, you could, you could actually, in your general fund, under each of those things, budget as long as you're doing it fair and equitable, making sure that the same amount per student is given.
You should not be in the extracurricular, not the general?
Well, you could do it extracurricular too, I mean, it could be either, either way. It could be either or, or it could be both, it could be a blending of both. Some districts do make the distinction that the general fund's gonna pick it up when it gets to the state level.
I mean, isn't this the first year we stopped paying? I mean, before, it's been, is that your question?
That, that's my next ques, that was actually my next question.
Cause it was just showed, it was...
Did we pay this year, or do we not pay this year?
We did not pay this year.
We did not pay for the, the tournament this year, okay. So what is...
Meals, we didn't pay meals.
Meals, yeah, I know, yeah, and then, so what, the travel budget, um, that's like the bus and gas, and that, and hotel and that sort of thing, if they needed them, okay. Okay, so it's, so I'm guessing then, in our proposed preliminary budget that we have here, we do not have meals budgeted?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Did we years prior?
Uh, not since I've been here.
So we've never budgeted meals out of the general fund, it's always been extracurricular?
They may have, I mean, we'd have to...
But no, within your time here, we've never, it's always come out as extracurricular?
Correct.
Actually, and, and to clarify, there's, um, there's an extracurricular category that is in the general fund versus the, um, the student, uh, accounts.
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, so...
There's one that covers all the extracurriculars.
Yeah, so, um...
Extracurricular activities.
The line item is...
That's two oh one, seven twenty, thirty, thirty-five hundred is extracurricular, and then thirty-five, ten is girls, basketball, three, nine, twenty.
Page nine and ten, that category's off.
So you have your travel, your supplies, so...
Okay.
The travel's simply bus, bus expense? About hotel?
That's in there too.
That's in there, so it's hotel and travel, no meal?
I believe so.
I don't think that's where, but I know that's where the travel would go, it kind of incorporates all of it, hotels, well.
So my recommendation would be if, if we did budget something like that, that it would be in this general fund, because you can't guarantee that any of the teams are going...
Are gonna fundraise.
I'd like to say they're all gonna go, but to states.
Not fundraise, you know, you're right, exactly, but...
And so, this execu, this extracurricular general fund, um, here's, here's a question I'll stack differently. When the individual teams do fundraise, or when the sporting program fundraise, where does that money go?
It goes into an activity fund that's outside of the general fund.
That's not, okay.
Bank account at, uh, our activities account at Florence Bank.
Okay, okay. And that's not, okay, so that doesn't include anything in here. So the teams could fundraise the money for the meals, and it would go into that separate account?
Correct.
So you're gonna verify that of the travel, that's budgeted in the girls, boys, all that, it does not include meals? Is that what you're, you're going to verify that, sorry?
No, I can tell you right now, we didn't pay millions out of it.
Oh, you're asking, unless hotels and...
It's only hotels and buses?
Yes.
Okay.
So let's, let's, let's further that a little bit, so are, are you saying that you, that you think that we ought to consider putting a food line in that travel? Out of general fund, or, or do you wanna, or do we wanna, or can we, can we? We wouldn't necessarily, this committee, but the board, that, could the board say, okay, so out of your Title IX equity money that you get, you have to spend it on this? And take away the flexibility that they've had to spend it on what they chose? If we, if, is, would that be something that the board would have to do to make a policy that extracurricular, the student activity account money fundraised that comes from your Title IX business, that you have to spend it on this? Whereas right now, it's been that they've had, they've had the choice?
The board has the authority to create a policy that dictates the priorities of spending if they want. So if you want to pass some kind of policy that says, you know, that meals will be budgeted for and cared for before other types of equipments and supplies are purchased out of extracurricular monies, then what it is, is you're gonna, you're gonna have a cost that is attached to that. Because when you just turn around and you say, okay, we typically have fifteen players on a basketball team that travel with the team, their costs for a breakfast, lunch, and dinner at seven dollars a meal is twenty-one dollars a day. They have the potential to stay for days, and you start multiplying that out, and you can figure out at a district, divisional, and state tournament, what those costs are, and then lock it down and say, you have to have thirty-two hundred dollars, you have to have twenty-eight hundred dollars of your fundraised money locked into that area, so that you have meals paid for when you travel. And then, I know that I, I've spoken to a couple of the activity directors in terms of their, uh, management of their accounts, and they've said they would like that, if they couldn't have more flexibility to get things and supplies for their athletes and their students. They've said, you know, you're telling me that I have to do that, and I said, well, it could be an option. But yeah, that, that could be one way to make sure and ensure that meals are being cared for. Otherwise, another way to ensure that it's being cared for is you dip into your general fund, and you say, okay, if we're basically at that level of expenditure where you need twenty or thirty thousand dollars, have your general fund set aside to care for meals, then we're in a discussion here today to say, okay, let's, let's raise the twenty or thirty thousand dollar hole, and figure out how we're going to now make adjustments inside this budget, so that that program of feeding kids at athletic events can become a value of the school district within its general fund. So I can help with what you're...
I'm sorry, we're still doing no audience participation, so, um, so that being said, is that something that we as a committee feel like that we, that we want to get information about so that we can make a recommendation to the board one way or another? Because, again, that would have to be made as a recommendation to the board from this committee if it's gonna go in the general fund. If it's, if it's a completely separate issue of, the board's gonna get involved with telling the, uh, individual coaches how they have to spend their fundraised money, um, that's a separate issue. Am I right there?
Correct.
Okay, so, the, then the question becomes here, do we wanna tackle that? And finding out the details of that as part of the next step for this committee.
Don't necessarily think it should be this committee, but I think your issue is valid, and it should probably be brought up at a different time and place, but...
Yeah, I mean, here's my, my opinion on it. As a parent, I'd like to see the meals paid for, because, you know, there's kids out there that were asking to travel with their team that maybe can't afford that. Um, but as budget committee member and looking at the budget and spending the last month looking at it, I don't really wanna treat, create a twenty to thirty thousand dollar, who won the budget either.
I don't think it's quite that high, but it could be extracurricular.
Yeah, it, it just depends.
What it should be in its...
So, I, I think I agree with, I think I agree with Colby in that maybe, um, that we aren't the people to make that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna recommend that we tell the kids that are fundraising for equipment that they have to spend it on those. I, I'm not comfortable with making that recommendation, so that's my opinion.
And if I hear both you and Colby correctly, um, this is more of an extracurricular activity item rather than a general fund item? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, yeah, so we can take that up as how we're gonna decide, but yeah.
That's extracurricular, yes.
Yes. But this is good, we're making a, I think we're making headway here. All right, anybody else have anything else that we, that we should ask for more information, or, um... Or, um, do we, do we feel like we need to have more, another meeting? Um, are we prepared to say tonight that, um, that we are willing to recommend to the board that we, the preliminary budget numbers that Mr. McGee has given us today? Um, or do we want to, or do we have more things we want to delve into?
I believe, I, I personally, I need more, I, I'm not ready for that, no.
Okay, and I'm more good with that. So I'm just asking if, if we feel like we're at that point or if we need to talk some more. And I, and I, I'm all for talking some more if we need to.
That's more to talk, I need to do more research myself on my own time and then get the proper information. My question's to you.
Okay.
And I'm not to that point yet, but I need to and I will do it, so.
And as I understand it, there's few things that need to yet be explored.
Right.
And one of the things that you've asked to be explored is the athletics in terms of PE classes and where we're at there. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I think that was a general question. My main concern is who were your proposed DAFF cuts, you know, and if we, and when, you know, you're, you're right. I don't know, I'm, I'm not comfortable with saying, all right, that's the right positions to cut. I'm not, if that's what we need to cut. I think the budget deficit situation on out of districts, another issue that could be addressed. Um, there's a number of things here. Uh, the health insurance savings, I like to see that, that's the one thing that, you know, other than that. But the proposed DAFF cuts, at this point, I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with where that's at. I'd like to see more research and who's making these choices and show me why and where you're coming from on those, but.
So we got a definitive list for what we're going to group back with for our next meeting then? So we're going to talk about, uh, information about outsourcing the computer tech? Okay, we're going to talk about, um. We're going to talk some more about out of districts, is that what we're?
I mean, I think you, I mean, I think we need to approach it differently and, and look at it as a deficit rather than a loss.
What I would like to see on the out of district, um, if possible, which I did look at this, so. Um, what I would like to see, um, let's, I would like to see if all 81 out of district kids chose not to go to Florence anymore, how much our cost per student would go up and how much our OPI. With the OPI funding per student wouldn't change, right?
You know, OPI actually has, uh.
Or is it part of their formula?
A spreadsheet, I believe, on this one, correct me if I'm wrong, that's correct. I understand, my understanding is OPI has a spreadsheet that you can plug this stuff into, factor in how that decrease normally. This does not only affect your A to B payment, but it gets into your basic entitlement payments and everything else.
Your budget authority.
Your budget authority and everything else. So then there's, there's somewhat of a ripple effect that transpires as a result.
So I would kind of see, I would like to see like best case scenario where, well, I don't want to say best case scenario because neither here nor there, but, um, I'd like to see if all 81 kids stayed in and we charged them out of district, what changes that would make?
Yeah, that's right.
And then what if?
Charged them at what level?
Um, Missoula does 1,200, um, somewhere around, it can run it off at a thousand.
Okay.
And then, um, see if we lost all 81 of those kids, kind of what that would look like. I'm not saying we would lose all 81, but I think we should see both ends of the spectrum.
About researching it, you know, about researching.
Survey those parents.
Survey those parents?
We could, yeah, we could survey those parents.
I think it's a large enough number to look at, I mean, we're looking at a quarter million, I mean, I think that's very reasonable.
I mean, I would, yeah, I'd like that information to make a, a better judgment, recommendation, so. And then I, I think that it's our, our duty as budget committee that if we don't like the cuts that have been proposed, that, you know, you sleep on it, you decide you don't like that, then you should probably come with something.
Which is where I'm at, I totally agree with that. I, I think I should give you some proposals back rather than everything just comes to you, so, and that's what I need.
It's really hard to move forward if we're not making recommendations back, so.
A quick question, on, on this proposed DAFF cuts, who meets, who, when you say we, who, who is we involved?
The administrative team.
Who is, which is who?
Which is Mr. Bowska, Mrs. Sala, myself, and Mrs. Akis.
That four, those, that's the four that are discussing, okay. Do you guys meet, what, is that, it's not a scheduled meeting, is it just?
Uh, we meet periodically.
Okay. All right, I think that's fair, fair enough, ours for tonight goes.
So we're going to, so the, again, the list is, I just want to go over that one more time. We're going to get some outsourcing on computer information. We're going to talk about this out of district stuff or bring back more information. And, um, is that the two, is that the two or is there, was there one more?
I think maybe we're, if, maybe we can bring back some proposed cuts on our, on our own as a committee? Should propose that as the next? And then talk about those. And this cutting stuff's not easy stuff, I totally agree, it's in, you gotta, it's in any business, it's hard stuff, but.
The, um, I just want to clarify one thing though, if we're bringing back proposed cuts, the, the principal position, that's already been put into motion.
It's already been.
Yeah.
So that's, that's done.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So we're letting bring back proposals for that amount for the two middle school and the one high school position?
Correct.
About 150.
Okay. Anything else?
You said another date?
Yeah, we should do that, does everybody got their calendar? That's a good idea. Keeping in mind that regular board meeting is Tuesday the 8th of April, um, and then the continuing, um, strategic planning meeting is the 15th. I thought Joe told us the 15th, but we should. I was pretty sure he said the 15th because I think he, I said tax day or something and he goes, yes. That's why that sticks in my mind, so, but we'll double check that. But anybody have a particular date that's better for them?
What, which one do you propose, what was the date? Which one did, did you pick a date or sorry?
No, we haven't picked a date. The, the strategic planning, though, that, that date with Montana School Boards Association, I believe is the 15th. And then of course, our regular board meeting on the 8th, so those two nights are already taken.
So maybe the week of the 21st?
That's the, for April.
That's Easter Monday, are we having that day off? We have, we're going to school on Easter Monday? Okay.
It's March Madness tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, that works for me, to the rest of that week I'm gone, so. The only one I, if we were to pick that week, that'd be the 21st, that Monday.
One day?
Doesn't have to be that week.
I mean, that works for, me personally, it works good.
If, that way if we, if something comes up, we have a few extra days in the month if we pick the 21st, is that on booth, everybody?
I like it.
Okay, so on our usual 6:30 here then?
That works.
Okay. Okay, so everybody's got their homework and, um, thanks for hanging in.
All right.
And we'll see y'all next.